Okay, call to order this regular scheduled Green Hills Council meeting for November 28th, 2017. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Dries?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Yeah, here.
Not here.
And Mayor Moore?
Here.
And Mr. Cavode has excused absence.
Have a prayer by Mr. Dries.
Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve. I pray that we would act justly and mercifully. I ask that you watch over the residents of this village, those that are grieving, especially the broke-off family at this time. I pray that neighbors would reach out and help neighbors. And thank you for the spirit of Thanksgiving that exists within our community all year round, but thank you for just the time last week. We pray this in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 24th, the work session of October 24th, and the work session of November 14th. Do we have any corrections? Okay, hearing none. Minutes are approved. Okay, this is the time for our citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes. Anybody?
Good evening. My name's Pat Antoine. I live on Chalmers Lane in the middle of the targeted demolition area. Since this letter of November 3rd is a very stringent letter from the National Park Center Service that was written to the citizens of the village of Green Hills in care of David Moore and Yvonne, I doubt that the citizens will ever hear it, so I'm going to read portions of it. The National Park Service NHL program was recently notified of a proposal to demolish four historic buildings. By the way, this letter was written on November 3rd. We have been contacted by several local citizens of Green Hills who have expressed serious concerns over the proposed demolitions, offering information at odds with what we perceived previously received from Mr. Moore, Yvonne, and Beth Sahlberger. The National Park Service feels it's prudent at this time to clarify our position on this matter. It is discouraging that many of the same concerns and issues that occurred eight years ago still appear to be present today after the designation of NHL 2017. Less than a month later, after they took the award, the village sends a letter saying they want to tear down more buildings. The concerns we expressed over the earlier teardowns and new construction were acknowledged as the NHL nomination process was undertaken, but ultimately it was felt that national significance of the village, the entirety of the remaining resources, entirety of the remaining resources and the impactness of the original village plan and associated green belt outweighed the loss of historic fabric. Each successive action undertaken to demolish original buildings incrementally reduces the exceptional historic character and integrity that contributed to the federal recognition of the community as an NHL. A precedent had been set here, thanks to David Moore, Mr. Dries, and the rest of you, with the previous teardowns, and having now received notice that additional demolitions are proposed raises our concern that a precedent may evolve into a trend, which if similar actions were to be undertaken in the future, would have the potential to threaten the designation status. Clearly stated, excessive removal of listed contributing resources would lead to the loss of the qualities for which the NHL was designated and by extension, ultimately ceasing to meet the criteria for designation. At that point, withdrawal of NHL designation could become a very real possibility, which is a message you guys don't seem to hear. Based on input from local citizens concerned with this project, the National Park Service is not fully convinced that all possibilities for rehab and repurposing of the buildings in question have been exhausted. Based on additional input, we would encourage that a fully open and transparent process be pursued to acknowledge and consider additional possibilities and alternatives that may not have been discussed heretofore. There may be ideas on how to feasibly repurpose these buildings that have yet to be explored in a reasonable manner.
Okay, time's up.
You have had no planning, commission meetings on it, no ordinance.
Ms. Antoine, take your seat. Take your seat.
Yes, the time is up.
Take your seat.
The time is up.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments? Anybody else have anything? Okay, hearing none. Municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak?
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of items that I wanted to point out. First of all, I know council was expecting to see some legislation on the agenda tonight for changing the part-time position to a full-time position in the police department. I apologize for not getting that on the agenda, but would like to ask for a motion tonight to take that action. So, I believe you'll hear more about that a little bit later. Also, I wanted to mention that the aggregation program, the gas portion of it, which we do every two years, they have gone out, our broker has gone out to, with an RFP for suppliers. The new program would start in April. They'll be coming later this week to, as they do, you know, every few years, to fill us in on who has submitted the best proposal to become our supplier again for that next term of the gas aggregation program. So I will have something for you at the December council meeting to review that. And that's all I have at this time.
And comments or questions? Law Director, Jeff Forbes?
Thank you, Mayor. You may have received a written report from me. So, and I won't, I won't read it in its entirety, but just some of the highlights. If I may, just a little update, as we continue to watch things that happen in Columbus that may be of relevance to local governments. A few new bills that have been introduced recently. One has to, and again, these don't all apply directly to the village of Green Hills, but in general with local governments, they might. The first one was House Bill 410. It has to do with traffic violations, but more importantly, it has to do with photo enforcement, the camp traffic enforcement cameras. I think I reported maybe a few months ago that the state law that tried to regulate municipal use of those cameras have been declared unconstitutional and thrown out. The legislature has now taken another stab at it, so to speak. And this time, what they've, they've said is, okay, if you want to use these cameras, go ahead, but you're not going to get any more local government funding if you do that. Not that you get much.
So, yeah, it'd be a smaller three, isn't it?
And they've also specified that even though those are civil actions, that they would then fall under the, that you would have to actually bring a civil action in court to enforce those. So it's just another attempt at the state to deal with that. There's also been a new bill proposed that would have an impact on emergency vehicles with their lights and sirens. Has to do with the immunity statute that generally when working within the scope of your employment, you have immunity as you respond to emergencies. This would say that you would only have, I'm breaking it down, but essentially, you would only have that immunity if your lights and sirens were both activated at the time. Also, there's been a new bill introduced related to public record law, specifically as it may have to do with police body worn cameras. That's one of the big questions, as some departments have moved to using body worn cameras, is what exactly of that footage constitutes a public record? This is an attempt to try to say, not everything that's recorded on those cameras will be considered a public record. It's much more complicated than that, but it was just introduced last week. We'll wait and see how it progresses. Other items, again, examples of the, we've talked about this before, in the House, House Bill 49, the budget bill, that had the centralized income tax collection provisions. I indicated before that a coalition of municipalities were intending to file suit. They have now filed suit. And I believe the final count was, there were 137 municipalities that joined in that lawsuit. So, from the biggest cities to the smallest villages, they should be adequately represented in that case, and we will continue to monitor that and see how it applies here locally. And then the only other thing I'd like to report that's not in the written report, but is just a report on a piece of litigation that the village was involved in, and that was the injunction case related to the demolition project. That was heard in court yesterday. The motion for a temporary restraining order was denied. The village's motion to dismiss the case was granted. So as of yesterday, that case has been dismissed. The entry, the final entry was submitted to the court today, so we're waiting.
All right, any comments or questions? All right, Acting Clerk of Council, David Lumston?
Ordinance 2017-07LNR, Resolution 2017-33F, Resolution 2017-34SNS, Resolution 35F, Resolution 36F. We're all posted as required.
Comments or questions? Chief of Police, Neil Fertleman?
Thanks, Mayor. On November 9th, we graduated our third Green Hills Citizens Police Academy. Our graduates told us that they had some fun and learned a lot, so we also had a good time with those residents. If there is sufficient interest in our community, we plan to hold another Citizens Police Academy starting in February of 2018. There will be five sessions every other Thursday from 6:00 to 8:30. We would encourage anyone who might be interested to take an application, which is in our lobby or also online. We partnered with Forest Park Police and Fire on the Fill the Truck to benefit hurricane victims. There was a recognition ceremony held by the Forest Park Council Chambers, and we had representatives from both the Green Hills Police Department and our Citizens Police Academy that were given certifications at that meeting. One of the things we've done to stretch our training dollars a little farther is to do Train the Trainers. We've just recently certified two officers. One is certified as a self-defense instructor, and we plan to use his skills to train the community and hold another self-defense class for our residents. And we also have an officer who is also a, serves on the fire department, who has completed training in Stop the Bleed course for officers and victims that officers might respond to assist. So at the end of October, we completed the training with all of our officers through these two programs. We also did training on driving felony traffic stop approaches, stop stick training, and accident measurements. We had a very successful prescription drug take-back day. We took 60 pounds of pills, and they have gotten very specific on what the DEA will accept. We no longer can take even the containers. It's just pills themselves, no sharps, no needles or any liquids. So we had 60 pounds of pills in four big boxes. Our residents regularly use that program, so I think it's very beneficial. That keeps those prescription drugs out of the streams and rivers, so we encourage people to continue to use that. We're obviously close to the holiday season. There are lots of scams that are out there. We put some of that information on our website. We would encourage folks to take a look at that. One of the changing norms in our world is how we shop, and it's not so much in the brick and mortar stores as it is online, so that becomes a problem with packages that are delivered. So we have posted specific tips that may help people in safely receiving their packages. We did some successful grant writing, and Lieutenant Ward was instrumental in obtaining a bulletproof vest matching grant, which gives us a 50% match on bulletproof vests. The prices on those apparel continue to rise, so we're very happy to be able to have that grant for the next two years. In terms of our criminal traffic and other activities, during the month of October, we investigated six accidents. That's up from four in October of 2016. Eight crimes, which is up from six last October, 214 other incidents. We received 581 contacts with our citizens. 273 of those were dispatched or received by telephone, and 308 of those were self-initiated by our officers. We provided assistance to the public in 112 instances. We assisted other agencies 32 times. We made 61 criminal arrests and 53 traffic arrests. Thanks, Mayor.
Comments or questions? All right, hearing done. I'll have court receipts report on the next meeting. And our next council meeting on December the 12th will be the regular meeting in place of the December 26th meeting, if everybody concurs with that, so we can handle everything then. And we want to do Christmas decorations, so I'll give you to the end of the meeting to think about who's going to volunteer to go out and judge the lights and to try to pick a date that we go out and do that. And I would also like to thank the residents of Green Hills for continuing to support the village by renewing the levy that we had on the ballot in November and by renewing the terms of Ms. Hermes, Mr. Lee, and Mr. Dries, and myself for another four years. So, okay, moving on, committee reports. Services and Streets, Jeff Cavode's off.
The, the meeting of November 22nd, I believe, was, was, 20th, yeah, was, was, was canceled due to a conflict, scheduling conflict.
All right.
On, on Streets and Services, and I should have brought it up when the manager was speaking, on Election Day, I had a citizen ask about repaving on a residential street, and it had been patched previously, and it was patched a second time. It was in I section.
J section.
J, J section. And do you want to comment on what's going on next year with the water department?
Well, yeah, we were going to try to hold off until when they come in to do the Water Main project like they did on the other side of Winton Road a couple of years ago. We were able to take advantage of their contractor to get many of our roads resurfaced, so that's what we were hoping to do.
And are we looking for that sometime in 2018? Is that?
Late 18, and if you remember, they worked like through the winter, I think, on that one. Went on for quite a while, so 18 into 19 probably.
Okay.
It could be 19 before the surfacing happens.
Can you flesh out what the Water Main project is going to be, what they're looking at doing? What sections? I mean, just.
Roughly, it's I, J's.
I have I's and J's.
Yeah, there might be a little H.
We have a specific map in the office if, if you'd like.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have it with me, but it's mostly the I's and the J's.
And part of a Water Main project is they do some damage to the roads, so it wouldn't, it makes more sense to do paving after Water Main projects to not redo the work. So that's one of the things, we try not to redo work.
Yeah, I got that answer to that resident, but I thought it would be something to everybody, especially people on those, on those two streets.
Ironically, the road problems tend to come from the trees that are lining, lining the street. Yeah, so.
And I can put more information about that Water Main project on the website.
And, and also, we do have a paving list, just FYI. Obviously, it's not 100% exactly what you go on, but our services department does keep a paving list, and are assessing roads yearly, annually.
Okay, all right, moving on, Finance and Audit, Mr. Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first note was about election results, so I echo what the mayor said as for the support of voters. The fire chief isn't here, but in his absence, I know he was very appreciative of all the village residents that supported the turkey raffle. It's kind of a unique thing for our community. They still remain the best value in all of Hamilton County for public service. The all-volunteer, all-the-time fire department providing professional services to us, and the turkey raffle's just a fun event. So, thanks to everybody that either bought the, at the door, or attended personally. I want to congratulate the Winton Woods football team, that's the high school in our community. Thursday night, they are headed to the state football championship, so congratulations to all the young men that play on that team under Coach Parker and the band. Schools will be closed Thursday and Friday, so our fine residents, there might be school-aged children on your streets during the day, on those two days, so drive carefully, please. This Friday night is Light Up Green Hills, starting at 6:00. Just a couple of things of interest to people. Hot chocolate's going to be provided by Foster's at the Troubadour, and so there's a local business giving back locally. And if you haven't met Kevin and his family that run that restaurant, I would suggest you stop in and enjoy a meal with them. And we're thankful for Foster's at the Troubadour for providing the hot chocolate. We'll also have carriage rides, as we do every year. The Boy Scouts will be selling Christmas trees. There'll be a bonfire, ice carving, cookie decorating. I did have a conversation with Santa Claus himself earlier this week, and he will be arriving courtesy of the Green Hills Fire Department. Again, it runs from 6:00 to 8:00. It's a great event. It is one of the best deals in all of Green Hills, because it's all free, except for the Christmas trees that are for sale. So it's, it's a nice opportunity to see friends and family, for young and old alike, and so we look for a great turnout. The weather's going to be nice that evening also, so we'll see you Friday night. Now to finance. Just a couple of comments. We're working on the property and casualty renewal. We will have a 2018 appropriation shortly that we've been working on with the manager. Recently, I had a question about debt, village debt. We make a payment in December, so after that payment is made, the total outstanding debt for the village of Green Hills will be $1,149 million, and all voted and non-voted debt will be paid off in 2023. The voted debt portion of that $1,149,000 is $341,000, and that's the part that's paid off in 2023. The non-voted debt will be paid off in 2021. So, for the person that asked that question, and everybody else listening, that's the voted and non-voted debt with regard to any kind of redevelopment. The income tax fiscal year to, year-to-date for 2017 was $987,000. We're about 1.64% behind last year, or about 16, a little more than 16,000. The real estate tax year-to-date is $353,000, which is off about $14,000 from prior year, but if you recall, in 2016, we collected delinquent taxes on the shopping center, so that's kind of a non-recurring thing in a good way, although it causes us to have less revenue from real estate tax than prior year. Overall, general fund revenue is up about 9%, and the biggest thing affecting that is, is the collection for garbage, which is $123,000 of the 158 that is up. The general fund balance as of October 2017 was $1,254,000, and we continue to be reasonably close to our budget. We did have some increased expenditures in 2018. Some were planned, such as replacing a police cruiser for $42,000, but some were unplanned, such as a new boiler for $13,000 at Mark Ward. So, any questions on the current finances? I'll entertain those.
Hearing none. Safety, Melanie Harris.
We canceled the meeting today due to conflict, and when the time is appropriate, I would like to make a motion. So I guess I, right now, I need to make a motion to change the agenda to add a motion under new business to make the part-time officer a full-time officer.
Second.
Okay, moved in second.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Dries?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that's all I have right now.
Governmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Jack Lee.
Mr. Mayor, the scheduled meeting on the 23rd was canceled due to lack of agenda as well as conflicts, so nothing much to report.
Community Development, Jeff Holber.
Yes, I've got a number of things in the works. Yvonne and I had talked about a new resident packet, making sure that new residents have something that introduces them to, you know, what's going on in the community, how to get, you know, acclimated to our village. The other thing, too, as you found, I believe, from Greendale, is to put together an NHL brochure for us. I did talk to a couple of people at the Historical Society and maybe get some input from them as well, put something that really puts that forth in a good light like it is. We also talked about a commercial code brochure. We have a residential code brochure, but it would be nice to hand businesses something that summarizes the code portion of that. And that concludes my report at this point.
We have a meeting next.
Okay. All right, Recreation Cable TV, Claudia Walther.
We are going to have at the beginning of the year the first meeting. I was just trying to figure out the date for the launching of the new Harvest Fest for 2018. And for the cable and television, we're having the meeting on the second Wednesday of December. At 6:00, there's going to be some celebration for Christmas, and then at 7:00 is the official meeting for the Way Cross and Television. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, we have no new business?
Yes.
Oh, we do. We have that motion we changed, yes, okay.
I would like to make a motion to change a part-time position in the police department to a full-time position. Okay, so move.
I second it.
Okay.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Dries?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
And Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, all right, motion carries. Move a person from part-time to full-time. All right, and we don't have any old business, right? Okay, calendar?
Light Up Green Hills, December 1st, 6 to 8.
Community Development, December 5th at 5:00?
5:15.
5:15, sorry.
What date?
December 5th.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
We'll tentatively schedule December 18th for Laws and Rules at 4:00. If that works for you, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay. That's December 18th, Monday.
Calendar, he wants to add something to the calendar.
I just want to mention that Friday during the Light Up Green Hills, that Kappa Society will be having an open house, and we'll have refreshments and welcoming anybody who wants to come check out.
Thank you, Jeff. Sorry. That was an oversight on my part. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, who and when do we want to do the Christmas? Okay. Who and when do we want to do the Christmas decoration review? Volunteers? Some evening? I'll drive. Maria?
I'm traveling one, but I'm traveling some, but I will. Give me a date, give me a date, and I'll.
Discuss dates, and I'll tell you if my three-year-old would like to.
What about like the next Tuesday, or next Wednesday evening, something like that? People should have their lights on.
Give it a date, please.
Do you think it should be the following week?
The 6th.
The week of the 10th? Is that what you're saying?
We're going to tell them the first year decorations out the first week.
I'll be judging Christmas decorations in Peru that day.
You need an interpreter, right?
I could.
I can do it the 6th.
6:00 on the 6th?
Yeah.
I cannot.
You cannot, okay.
I can do it on the 6th, 6:00.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
December 6th, 6:00. Just meet up here and run out. Okay, anything else? All right. Meeting adjourned.